Bill Kennedy and Bill Taylor, fellow Select Board members. We have Town Administrator McStay to my left, and on her left is Ale Kroyt's assistant for the Town Administrator. Tonight's agenda, we're going to start off with a public hearing pursuant to RSA 41:14 regarding the sale of town-owned property, one-acre parcel lot on Greenfield Road. This is our third public hearing on this, as we've been awaiting more feedback from committees and such. We have some new business. Danica Malone, the Director of the Planning Department, will update us on a SolarSmart designation. It's kind of an exciting field. And then the beloved Seth MacLean, Director of Public Works and Assistant Manager, will give us a fire station update. A lot of work's been going into that behind the scenes. A lot of people have been spending a lot of time looking into things for us. And then hopefully we'll vote to approve minutes from October 4th and November 15th. We are on air, the usual avenues, and this meeting, along with many others, are always archived on our town website via Ustream. Check that out. Also on YouTube and Comcast Channel 22. So, of course, we all know, I think we all know each other in the room tonight, but if I do call on you, if you have a question or a comment, that's great, just please state your name so Ale can grab it for the minutes. Does anybody read the minutes after these meetings? Do you really take the brief minutes?
Yeah, they're very impressive, actually.
So anybody that hasn't missed any other meetings, you should get to go over there.
We'll make sure to include that.
[laughter]
Verbatim.
In bold. It's good when I forget what we've talked about. So with that, our third public hearing on this, I'd make a motion that we open the public hearing pursuant to RSA 41:14.
Hold on a second. All is in favor?
Aye. Nicole, you want to just give us a brief update? I don't see anybody in the audience that might have been here from the others, or maybe they have.
So, very, very briefly, typically you only do two public hearings on the sale of town-owned property, but for extenuating circumstances, the Conservation Commission was not able to meet to make a recommendation on this until after the selectmen had already held the second public hearing. So, just to make sure that there is no question about the process, if the selectmen choose to sell this property, Town Attorney has recommended just repeating the public hearing process, so that's what we're here doing. So we'll hold the public hearing tonight. We'll hold a second one on the 20th, and then the selectmen will vote at the subsequent meeting, January 3rd. I can't remember the date off the top of my head. Let's say it was January 2nd, though.
And there's no rush to sell this property? It's been town-owned for quite some time?
Quite some time, yeah. It's been town-owned for a couple of decades now. It is a very small piece of land, exactly one acre, more or less. It is off of Greenfield Road. It is mostly wet. As you can see, over the years, the adjacent property at 730 Greenfield Road has expanded its footprint, let's say, into the town-owned piece of property without the town's awareness. The current owners have only recently bought it, within the last couple of months. They were shocked to find out that the property they thought they were buying is in fact not the property that they bought. And so they would like to remedy that situation by purchasing this property from the town. We would also like to remedy the situation, so that's why we're here. The Conservation Commission did get their recommendations in to the selectmen on November 18th. It is substantially wet property. There is some disturbance. They are concerned that there is no expansion of the disturbance. It may well be that this parcel has actually been, you know, built like this for quite a long time. The original house, it was this, the reconstructed house, the house burned, the original house burned in 2000 or 2001. When it was rebuilt, it was rebuilt with some additional encroachment, so. And also, the planning board has been consulted, and they do not have any particular objection to the town selling the property either.
Now, I do know that we've received several selectmen, but we've had some correspondence from residents regarding the sale of this property. And one of the questions that was raised, and others have raised it with me as well, is do we have any mechanism in place in which we review town-owned properties and issue usage?
Yes. So, most town properties are being conserved. Most of the town-owned properties are either in use, you know, such as the townhouse, for instance, recreation, what have you. Other town-owned properties are held by the Conservation Commission and have easements that are monitored. Some are monitored by the Conservation Commission themselves, other easements are monitored by outside entities, like the Hair Center, for instance. There are some properties, like this one, very few, though, that are very small tax-dated properties that were acquired at some point. Typically, they just sit vacant. There's this one. There's one on Granite Street. There's just a couple of them, just dotted around town. They're too small to develop. They're of no benefit, really, to anyone, so the town is a little...
You mean to sell the one on Granite Street to the neighboring property?
We sold one on Granite Street to the neighboring...
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's another one. Now, that triangle bit at the end, that was another one that we took by tax deed as well.
There's a little parcel right across from Summers Street, right across from the fire station on Summers Street. A little parcel that the town owns. Now, the neighbor was asking me if he could purchase the property, but he decided that the process was so onerous. He probably wouldn't be alive by...
Try not to make it too onerous, because that one really does want to purchase a piece of town-owned property. It just depends on the property, but it's not necessarily a horrible process, but as you can see, it does take a little bit of time.
Well, what do you think we could get for this building?
I'm just a question.
And what would be a fair leaseback? Anybody else have a question? Anybody have any information they'd like to share? How about that? All right. I think we've fulfilled our duty to have another public hearing on this, so I'd make a motion to close this public hearing.
Second. All is in favor?
All right, thanks. Thanks for that update. Danica, should we have had confetti and balloons and...
Not yet, so...
No more than when you are now set.
This is really the first unveiling, and I was hoping to have the plaque here with me to present it to you guys, but we've applied for a SolarSmart designation. And for those who might not be familiar with what that is, it's a national program which works with municipalities to essentially streamline and enhance the process for getting solar permitting done in your community, so that we are, so to speak, open for business for new solar projects, whether that be residences, businesses, or municipal solar areas. So, after all that work was done, I'm excited to pass along to the board that we have been awarded a Gold Level SolarSmart designation. We are one of three in the town, in the state of New Hampshire. The other two are also cities, so that's a pretty big deal for us.
I looked at the map. I didn't see, I didn't see the other cities.
Keene and Hanover.
Oh, Hanover has it?
Hanover has one, too, and they're...
Do they have gold status?
They are silver.
Ah.
Oh, they are? Oh, I didn't know that. Okay, so I take that back then. But we are one of three, and it's pretty exciting news. So, we'll be getting a plaque, and we'll be getting a media package from them. The press release will go out tomorrow. So we're pretty excited to have that initiative moving forward for us. Yeah, thank you.
I missed your little, your exchange with Dory about the, was that about Hanover?
Oh, Hanover is technically a town. I suppose.
It is, yeah. They have a town manager and a select board.
Okay, yeah, so, but still, out of three.
Still silver, right?
Silver. So we beat them there.
Good for them. Nice, Seth.
Thank you.
Any questions to ask?
Well, I want to say something about that. There was a lot of work involved in that, which Danica took on, and I think she deserves a hand for it.
Yes.
Great. Good point, thank you. James?
Can you give a headline of the financial implications of this?
None. There are none...
Zero? No money?
None, and including for the whole permitting process for us to be designated, they give us someone at the SolarSmart organization to help guide us through the process and go through all of the projects that we need to fulfill to meet the criteria to get designated for bronze, silver, and gold. So there is no cost to us. The one benefit that we can get out of this is that if we ever come, grants come online, we can point to this SolarSmart designation as a solar-ready community that supports it, so there is that possibility.
This is funded by the Department of Energy.
And we got the gold.
But no money.
No money.
Gold, we'll hold a plaque.
Well, it's gold.
Dory?
So there are financial implications for builders, that because it's streamlined, more streamlined, they will save in some of those soft costs with permitting. So, there's no cost, but there is benefit.
Yep, yep. That's one of the many criteria we had to work through, was reviewing and inventorying the processes that we had right now and making sure that they were as fast and streamlined as they could be to, like Dory said, kind of reduce those soft costs for them.
That's good to know. Is there any way we could get information, educational materials, to hand out to anybody that comes in for a permit downstairs, even if it's just for a chat out back?
Yes. So one of the things that we had to do was a solar permitting guide, and it's very, very comprehensive. We now have a solar landing page off of the Office of Planning and Building's webpage, which includes this checklist guide for both developers and homeowners to figure out what they need to do for the permitting process. It's essentially very basic, but it gets all the way down into the level of, here's the sample email template that you would send Tim Hurley with your permit application. So it's very detailed, but it covers virtually everything that we could think of. That's also available for print in our office, though.
Well, I was also thinking, even if someone's just coming in not even, without solar, even on their radar, and they just like maybe a garage permit or something, could there be materials to give to them at that time, at that time, so then they can learn about possibly putting a solar on there?
Absolutely. So that's one of the things that we're trying to be doing more frequently in our department, is when there is opportunity to be encouraging kind of renewable or sustainable building practices, even if the permit application that's come in, we can kind of give them something to kind of take home and think about. So we're kind of working on those materials, so, yep.
Nice.
I should mention, if you don't mind, I should mention that this process was initiated by the Peterborough Renewable Energy Planning Team, the CIP team, and it's just one of the many efforts that we have on the table to support the community.
Really by Brian?
Yeah, yep.
It's Brian, yeah.
You have the first guy to put the cheers to somebody else.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Brian is the one who really started that process, so, yeah.
Yes, I forget your name, sorry.
Mary Clark.
Danica, what were some of the criteria that resulted in Peterborough obtaining the Gold Level?
So one of the big ones is that we have to ensure that there is no more than two inspections for a solar permit being installed. That's fairly easy for us, because right now we don't have that in place where there's more than two. We just have to make sure that it's very clear what those processes are, so that if someone comes in and they want to install it, they know exactly what Tim's going to be looking for, what he's going to be inspecting, all of the features of the building and electrical code that he's going to be asking to know about. That was the main one, that there is residential solar allowed by right, that there is trainings that have happened for our building and zoning staff, but also the fire department as well played a role in this. And Chief Walker passed along some of the recent trainings that they've done, which helped contribute to the points that we needed. The solar landing page was a big thing, as well as that checklist that we had, and then we had some other work in between. Yeah.
Bravo. When you get that, let me know when you get that plaque. We'll meet over at the post and beam and celebrate it.
They want a picture of us with it anyway, so we'll take a nice glamour shot.
Beer, beer, not mandatar.
Brian, you should bring bread for the photo op.
All right. That's great.
Yep, next. Welcome, Seth.
Thanks, Tyler.
Listen up.
Beautiful.
Wow, it looks so familiar.
Thanks, Tyler.
Thanks, everybody who showed up. I'm sure some of you are definitely here to talk about fire stations tonight, so thanks for making some time. A lot of you have been working on this with me for the last few months, from most of the people sitting in the audience, so thanks for showing up, and let's jump right into it. So we're going to give the update, the first update since town meeting on the progress in the fire station, if you could. But before I do that, I think it's really important to acknowledge the number of people that have been working on over this project over the last couple of years. And I'm going to start back with the Architecture and Selection Team that ultimately selected HKT Architects to take us through the schematic site survey portion of our project. Rodney Bartlett, former Town Administrator, Tim Hurley, Code Enforcement Officer, Chief Walker, John Hampson, I don't think, I didn't see John, so he's not here tonight, Tom Humphrey, Peter LaRoche, Ed Walker, and Nicole McStay. We're all part of that. We spent a lot of time doing our best to try and put a good proposal out and make a good selection, so that we can take this project to the next step.
Are you saying that Chief Walker worked twice as hard?
I noticed it. We've already found our first typo here. We couldn't even get through the first bullet point.
It's fine.
In any case, a lot of work went into that, and a lot of good results came from that. The next was the Municipal Task Force, which happened last year, did a lot of work. Mr. Patton, who's not here, but Mr. Kennedy was on this, Alan Zeller, who was a friend of many of ours who passed away this past year sadly, but should get the recognition for the time he put into this. Kate Coon, John Hampson, Valerie Jenkins, Peter LaRoche, Colin Murdo, Sarah Steinberg-Heller, Chief Walker, Rob Fox, Beth Alpakote, Matt Lundstedt, Danica, and Nicole all worked on that, all through 2021, leading up to town meeting vote of this past year. Select Board, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Ward, Mr. Kennedy. Each one of these gentlemen, since May, have met with me independently numerous times. Bill and I, along with the members of the BudCon, which I'll mention in a second, traveled for a big portion of the summer. Bill really spent a tremendous amount of time invested in this project and getting out there and doing dirty work to figure out what makes the most sense for our community. So I appreciate you, Bill. Thank you for taking the time. He did all the driving, too.
I don't like being the passenger.
Yeah, that doesn't surprise probably anybody in the room here. But in any case, all three members of the board met with me independently of one another, and we spoke about the project, what they wanted to see from this project going forward, their goals, and any other conversational pieces that, you know, they wanted me to consider as we were learning along the process. I don't list the entire Budget Committee here, but I do list the members of the Budget Committee since middle of summer, who took time out of their lives to go and visit different facilities around the state and in Massachusetts. Carl Mavzino went to most of them. Leslie Lewis was the liaison of the project and helped facilitate some of those tours. Mandy Sliver, I don't think Mandy's here, also is kind of involved in the backend of that. I don't think she joined us on a tour, but was heavily involved leading up to today. Rick Lesser did join us, Andrew Osterman, Ronnie McIntyre is here tonight, Mary Clark's here, and Al Lenos all spent time out of their week to come join us and learn from other communities and their experiences, so I appreciate your efforts. We learned a lot, and your efforts matter to me. Thank you. Fire Department, Ed Walker, John Hampson, and Brad Winters all spent time, mostly through the chief, discussing, working on this, making sure that they're helping from their perspective, especially on the technical end, to help inform our decisions going forward. Appreciate you, thank you. Lily Gilligan, and I'll get into her heavy lift sort of in the summer, where she helped us do some forecasting and do some budget work, so that we could better inform the board on sort of project target for Phase 1. So thank you, Lily, appreciate it. And Tim Rose, who's not here, he's our Highway Superintendent, unfortunately, and I'll talk about it a little bit in a bit. Ed and I were scheduled to go to South Carolina in September, but there was a bit of an emergency situation, so Tim Rose, on about two days' notice, stepped in and traveled with me to South Carolina. I'll talk about that conference a little bit, but there were two tracks, and I didn't want to miss the Track B that was happening every day, so Tim took the time to travel with me, somehow avoided COVID, which I got while traveling to South Carolina, and we got through it, but I thankfully didn't get him the disease there, so. And then finally, the residents of Peterborough. Last year was a tough slog, no question about it. There was a lot of difficult decisions that had to be made. There was a lot of difficult information, but people were receptive to it. They certainly were going to go through some of the things the community is expecting of this going forward, but people paid attention, and people voted, and people want to see this move forward in a responsible way, so the residents, I appreciate it. Thank you so much. So thank you, everybody. A lot of work. If you could go to the next slide, Nicole. But that work goes back to 2004, so there are dozens and dozens and dozens of other people that have been involved in this going on 20 years at this point. I'm not going to go through these, I just want to point out to anyone who might be watching or hasn't looked at the Peterborough Projects website, that this information is available. This helped to shape the direction or the need for this project leading up to last year and our path forward. This is a quick screenshot of the virtual tour that the chief did tour last year, showing the current facility and some of the deficiencies. If anyone hasn't seen that and is interested, I believe need is pretty well established at this point, but if you're curious, there it is, Peterborough Projects. I also mentioned, as we continue moving forward in our project, we'll start updating this again, including a video from tonight, the PowerPoint that I'm going through now, and then subsequent information as we go forward. Okay, so the fire station project Phase 2. So in my mind, that kicked off officially the day after town meeting. It was a couple of days before town meeting. I understood that my role and part of my job here with the town is a project manager. I've done a lot of civil projects here in town, but I knew at some point if this was successful, I'd be getting involved and sort of being in the middle on the project management end of it. And so the board and the staff, Nicole, asked me, okay, this is the time, if this thing passes, we've got to figure out what the next phase is. My charge, talking to the board and the community and listening to the feedback of the community, was to go out and gather as much information to inform our project and our process for project delivery, and then report back to the Select Board with my recommendations, recommendations guided by the work of others as well. Some key points that we needed to pay attention to as we went through this process this last summer is that, one, obviously, we needed to balance the programmatic need of our facility with the availability of funding. I'll say that a little bit more bluntly. The community said the project was too expensive and we needed to bring the price down. No question about it. Understanding what the community is willing to invest sort of ties to bullet point number one. We needed to figure out that, which we did, and I'll detail that from the August Budget Committee session. Needed to understand project delivery methods, so how do we take ourselves through a design process to an actual bidable document, because there are numerous types that you could use for a project like this. Now I'll make a recommendation in what I think makes the most sense for our community as we get to the back of this presentation. Learning from other communities that have built fire stations, and talk a little bit about the places we've visited. Gathering professional resources, so getting our hands on different RFQ and RP documents, contract documents, and other relevant information that could help inform our process. Evaluating alternatives, such as the reuse of an existing fire station design, so rather than just say we're going to do a fresh design, we need to look at all options. The board was pretty clear with me on that in a recent Select Board workshop. We want to make sure that we've covered all bases. If there's a better way to go that saves us money, we should consider it. And of course, seek out and utilize community input, and I'll talk on the next slide a fair amount about how much of that work has already happened and what we're looking at going forward. Actually, it's the slide after, but before we get there. There are some known project assumptions at this point. These are the things I don't think we're still trying to decide whether they're relevant to where we're going. The first is that the project's scope is development of a new facility designed to house the fire and ambulance services with some consideration to future needs. At one point, we were talking about a municipal campus. At this point, we're talking about a fire and EMS facility with attention paid to whomever we select as an architect to understand that we can, we may have future accommodations that can happen on the site, but right now the focus is on a fire station that can house EMS as well. The Select Board are the owners of this project. They will be provided with regular updates, and will formally decide on all relevant considerations leading to public vote in May of 2024. This is a big lift. There's going to be a lot of people involved, but at the end of the day, the Select Board are making the decisions up to town vote. Peterborough has committed to the development of a new fire station to be located at the Elm Street location. We're no longer looking for a location, we have a location. Future contracted service providers will be tasked with validating and revising the prior programmatic study. And that programmatic information will be delivered in a meaningful and easy-to-understand format. It gets particularly important. It's going to be very important that we at least validate the work that's been done with another outside source to make sure that we're making good decisions on our own design. The new station will be designed to accommodate that validated and revised program the department currently delivers with some consideration to future growth. The community expects a project that balances programmatic need with financial viability, and the community expects strong public process that solicits and utilizes community input, and I'll talk a lot more in detail about these as we move along. So what have we been doing since May? We've been going out and learning as much as we can, so that we start Phase 2 tonight, hopefully. So in May, we had our town meeting, which authorized $2 million for the design, engineering, and construction of a new fire station. Right after that, meetings began with Select Board members one-on-one, fire chief, town administrator, and various Budget Committee members. In June, the Select Board held a workshop to discuss expectations and goals for the project, formally sort of giving me my charge to move forward and with the direction we decided to take for the summer in terms of going out and gathering information and learning. Additional meetings, I keep writing that, but meetings were ongoing, and a lot of the people that I met with are in this room. We met consistently and regularly, whether it was at Parker House or here in the office. We spent a lot of time chatting, and, you know, because I feel that the staff always has a lot to learn from the community and needs to get your input, of course, but also to best understand what our real goals are here and what we should be aiming at. I appreciate everybody who took time to spend with me. Some are not here tonight, many are. July, the Budget Committee, and we have a Budget Committee, and find it sort of informal meeting. It was a lunch meeting, myself and Lily and members of the BudCon and CIP, to discuss an upcoming meeting in August, where we could talk about total bonding capacity and figure out essentially a ceiling for Phase 1 of our project. We need to understand that, because we can't give our designers and professional contracted service people a very good, a very good starting point if we don't know what we're aiming at. And so that was determined, and I'll talk about that on another slide. In August, we started our tours. We visited Keene, City of Keene, Swansea, Groton, Massachusetts, and a couple of members of the BudCon went to Westford, providing notes back to myself. Got to say, honorable mention to Carl for all your work on documenting those meetings. I have all that. We'll be using that, all the notes and all the things we've learned from those meetings. If there's relevant information, we can incorporate it into our own. So I appreciate you taking the time to do that. We did additional meetings with stakeholders. Budget Committee and the CIP joint meeting occurred to discuss debt cap and bonding capacity for the project, and in another slide, I'll show you precisely what we came up with, or what the board ruled on, I should say. September, we did a couple more tours. We went to Summersworth and Dover. Bill and I had a great seafood lunch on the coast.
It was hot, that day.
It was hot. Great tours. I should step back, and I'll talk a little bit more about the tours in a second, but we met with incredible staff and people who were willing to take time out of their busy schedules to talk to us about their process, their project, and what worked and what didn't, and I'll talk a little bit about it more, but, you know, so many people are willing to help when you reach, and I appreciate that very much. Let's see, October, Select Board provided the 70% total bond capacity target for the project at a Select Board meeting. November, there was another Select Board workshop, where we talked about sort of leading up to tonight, making sure that I understood, did we cover everything? Are we good with the direction at this point? At which point I was given one more sort of task I needed to work through, and I did, and we'll talk about it a little bit tonight. We did one more tour in Newbury, New Hampshire, and then additional meetings occurred again, just informal. Next slide, please. So those facility tours. These are actual photos of some of the facilities that we visited, including Summersworth in New Hampshire, which was currently being built when we were there, and the fire department was actually working off one side of it while the other side was being constructed. It was quite interesting to see how they were making that work. It was a little tight. In any case, like I said, we went to Keene, Swansea, Dover, Summersworth. Some members went to Westford, Groton, Mass, and Newbury. We met with fire chiefs, city and town managers, and other staff for a question-and-answer session, which usually was around an hour to an hour and a half, followed by a tour of their facility in most cases. The BudCon developed a great list of questions that we used to help facilitate those conversations. A lot of those questions were designed around the public process, the design process, and then certain design considerations, training components, other things you'd want to know when you're talking to them about wins and things they would do over again if they had an opportunity to. And again, most of those conversations, though not formally documented, have been documented, when you're talking to them about wins and things they would do over again if they had an opportunity to. And again, all, most of those conversations, though not formally documented, have been documented, and we bleed a lot of great information out of them. I have a few key takeaways that are, there's many takeaways from these, but a few that will lead to sort of the recommendation I'm going to make in a couple of minutes here. The first is no two projects were exactly alike. And I think a lot of people have kind of figured that here. These are technical, expensive buildings that are built to, to a community-specific needs, and we saw that everywhere we went. They were different. There were some consistencies in design and some, some consistencies in process, but generally speaking, these were very different places with very different styles of government, very different community input, very different, you know, budgetary restrictions, so to speak. The projects we looked at ranged from $3 million to $11 million. They were pretty well exclusively just fire and in some cases EMS facilities. They were not municipal campuses. Those projects were built between the years of 2008 and 2022. All those projects in the public sector utilize strong owner representation, meaning a construction manager or some form of that. And I'll talk a lot about that in a moment. The size and scope of those projects vary greatly based on the programmatic needs of that community, the community's goals, the availability of funding, and again, the type of government. Many design considerations Peterborough may, may be able to use were found, like I said. And city managers were ecstatic with the outcome, but fire staff resoundingly, resoundingly indicated additional space was needed. That's for Ed, just on, just teasing, but it's true. And whether what that gets at is we have to, you know, we have a very expensive project in front of us and we have to find a way to balance what we really need versus what we can afford. So I'm trying to make light of that, but. Steering committees ranged in size and scope depending on the community they arranged and charged to, which I should have mentioned there. Sometimes steering committees were set up prior to the acquisition of property to focus on figuring out a place to put a fire station. Sometimes they were asked to do specific ta, I guess, the net of it is steering committees depend on the community itself and what the community wants for that level of oversight. We didn't see, I didn't see a lot of similarities in how they were structured. Next slide, please. Our bonding capacity meeting in August. I'll summarize it pretty quickly. I'm sure a lot of people are already familiar, but essentially the board said, let's keep this project to 70% of total bonding capacity as a target for this phase. Okay, what that equals if the projections hold, because it's projected out to FY '25, is $12.1 million. From my perspective, what we've seen from a technical perspective on the value of these types of facilities and the need to keep the programmatic needs of our community in mind is that it could result in a phased approach to our construction. I understand that we have a target, but what we should be doing is making sure that if we can't do it all in one pass, we're coming up with a design that accommodates future growth for the site. This was a copy of a page that Lily actually handed me where she did the math and came up with the number, so it's a little redundant, but that is, that is where the current projection is at 70% of total bonding capacity. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, in September, myself and Tim Rose traveled to South Carolina to what was called the Fire Design Symposium. The chief put me onto this through his professional organizations and encouraged me to attend. We covered a lot of topics in about a three-day period with a hurricane rolling in, by the way, which I meant, didn't mention before, we were actually down there when that hurricane was rolling through, so that was fun. They covered, and I won't go into a lot of detail here. What I will say is that these classes are going to help us, help me to inform committees as they form, so I can disseminate that information back to the public, and we can use it as we're developing different aspects of our design in our process. We talked about things from project programming to the actual design of apparatus, added space, down to humidity control. I don't think I put it on here, but acoustic control in these rooms, community engagement and effective planning. I mean, just a tremendous amount of topics were covered. I have all the notes in PowerPoint decks and all the things from this present, the presentations I went to, and I'll be looking for meaningful ways to use that information to inform us as we move forward. Okay, project delivery methods. There are three project delivery methods that are traditionally used for fire station projects. We're all in this community fairly well up on design bid build. We've used it many times here. We've used it for the Main Street Bridge and most of our big, heavy civil projects in the community. And what that means is you hire an architect, you design it, you put it out to bid. Hopefully, you get a winning bid and you build it. There are about 50% of projects nationwide for fire stations are utilizing this still, but only about 10% in the Northeast. And I'll talk about that in a second. So far, as I can say, well caveat there, that's anecdotal. This is the best information I can find. We sort of anecdotally noticed that, but I've heard this from other architects, construction managers, and other people, not the preferred method for a fire station project in New England. The advantages, as I've seen many times, and we're about to get bids for Cold Springs this week, is you get, you have one bid package that goes out, contractors can get it. It's fairly competitive and can sometimes reduce pricing depending on your current construction market. Low cost at a time of bid based on contractors' interpretations of fine specs. So again, it can drive, help to drive costs down on a project depending on the type of project. It provides a fair and equitable delivery system for contractors, and it does allow adequate control for the project owner, the community, the select board to make sure you're about an opportunity to, you know, for us to inform the design process. There are some disadvantages to it, though, when you have an architect design your facility and you're not, you can't be, and you take it up through a 90% design, basically is essentially how it usually is done, and then you get cost estimates. You're only as good as the architect's estimates and their, their estimator at that point. What can happen when you go out to bid is you might find some unknowns and change orders tend to happen at a higher frequency on projects like this. There can be limited opportunity for value engineering for that same reason. Oftentimes with design bid build, you get two great, two strong estimates of your project of the 30 and the 30% and 90% mark. Those are your opportunities to say, we're over budget, we need to step in here. So you don't have as much flexibility. Another disadvantage, multiple points of contact during construction between the owner, designer, and contractor, exactly as it says. The schedule is determined by the owner and the architect, so it's not always aligned with the realities of construction and constructibility. It requires a three-party conflict resolution system. So you've got the town, the designer, and the contractor who you can get out if you end up in a problem. The owner is the mediator between the architect and the contract. So in that case, my job most likely and/or the town administrator and our, our legal folks. Owner assumes the most risk for the project. The accuracy of the drawing, managing numerous contracts. Yes, that is relatively true. We own the design at the end of the day. We provide the architect with the information that they need, and if there are problems with the design, it's essentially on the town at that point. The architect's schedules sometimes do not align with contractors. Sometimes might be conservative on that. It's just, especially in our current construction market, it can be very difficult sourcing materials. And I think last year was an example of how that can, things can go a little longer than you hope depending on you get a schedule, but it doesn't always go the way you hope. So that can be a problem. Bids can be missed due to problematic construction estimates, same kind of theme, and design constructibility issues can arise requiring additional time and money to rectify. Design build, so the second, from what I could find, about 10% of fire station projects nationwide. So again, these percentages reflect fire station projects. Not used as heavily as construction management, which I'll talk about in a minute, and design bid build. The advantage is design build regardless are, it tends to be the fastest delivery method. So if you're trying to be expedient with your project, your project is moving along and being designed essentially as it's being constructed at a certain point. That right there sort of tells you why municipalities don't often use it because of our funding windows, it can be very difficult to manage a project like that. One point of contact between the owner and contractor designer. You have a single point of contact with your firm that helps you. You're not trying to be the arbiter as a community or staff people in the middle. The designer has access to construction costs during the design phase. Also good, helps with some level of oversight to keep yourself within budget. The owner has access to the project team, also great, so the town would have access to the design team. And quality control is enhanced with the designer and contractor communicating during the designing phase. The disadvantages from what I could find and who the folks I've talked to, tends to be the most expensive delivery method. Tends to not be utilized on expensive public projects because there's less involvement from the owner and the public. You have usually a design build firm under one roof. Oftentimes, these are used in commercial and residential projects because you're starting with sort of a canned design. That doesn't often fit well when you're designing schools, fire stations, other public facilities. The architect does not serve directly as the owner's agent. The architect works as a subconsultant through the design bid firm. So you have less engagement with the folks that are actually designing out or less direct contact. Cost commitments often not based on a full design set. Again, design build is for expediance, and so you're already moving and you've got to be very rapid in your decision-making, and you're often already building without a full design set in hand. And there's limited opportunity for value engineering because, like I said, that window is very tight. So if your, if your goal is, if number one goal is total project budget, this is probably not the way to go. And then lastly, it's construction management. A lot of people in our community are now familiar with this model. We use it on the library project. They say fairly successfully. This number is growing from what I've learned. 40% of projects nationwide are using some form of construction management at this point, and 90% of projects in the Northeast. The advantages, you get detailed cost transpens, transparency, and regular cost estimating throughout the project to meet budgetary targets in key days. So you're getting refined cost estimates on a very, very regular basis, not just twice through a project. The key personnel continuity for the entire project, you're working probably with one or two owner representative who works on behalf of the town, on your behalf, helping you source these things and make decisions as you go. Design input and constructibility collaboration between owner, designer, and construction manager. So I, this is the maximum amount of ability the community would have to influence the design and make sure you've got someone well-versed in the construction field, understanding the challenges there to help influence the design through the process. This minimizes change orders and allows for carrying lower contingencies because you're refining and you're working with construction experts as you go. You should have less unknown variables when you break ground on your project in the future. Aligns cost with scope prior to guaranteed maximum price. Mitigates risk for the project owner. So if the community were to go with a guaranteed maximum price on their construction manager managed project, if the project overruns, the risk is held by the construction management firm and not the community. So for instance, if you said, we have a $12 million project, and I'm not saying that's what our value is, I'm just saying for example's sake, and your construction management firm says, I'm guaranteeing you, you're going to have a $12 million project. If it's a $14 million project, it's not the voters of Peterborough that are holding the bag through their mistake, it's they that have to actually cover that cost. Increased project control for the community, particularly the design phases. Again, when you have a strong owner representative, representative who's first in construction, who's working with your community and influencing the design and keeping you as a community and a staff informed, you have much more control over the design elements of that project. Construction management offers pre, I mean, I'm getting to it, aren't I? Right? Like, the conclusion is very obvious. But anyway, pre-construction services is another thing. I'm sorry, I had to throw that in there. Development of a master schedule, early budget estimates, programmatic review, evaluation of alternatives, site analysis, and other considerations. When going this model can happen prior to even the selection of an architect. So you can really start to hone your project and understand and give great information to whoever you design, whoever you hire as a designer, if you decide to go with pre-construction service component as well. Again, more control for the community. And it's the most likely delivery method to control cost and work to a prescribed budget. The disadvantages are the increased collaboration requires additional time for staff and community members. You're going to meet more regularly, you're going to have more regular updates, you have more involvement, but that takes more time. In some projects, there can be quality control issues with utilization of less skilled subs. Again, construction management is incentivized to keep you at your guaranteed maximum, and they've got to hit that target. So they're going to need at times to find ways to hit that target. So you have to be careful with these types of projects to make sure that you're getting good advice and that you're checking everything because there can be issues there. Lower quality materials can be used to help keep costs down, too. Also important, we're talking about building a 75-year building. I don't think we want low-cost materials for something like this, but it's something to be aware of as we move forward if we go this route. And risk for communication errors, which can turn into huge errors because the construction manager is actually the single point of contact. So if the construction manager or construction manager firm were to make a mistake that influences design and construction, you could have a big problem on your hands. So that's one of the disadvantages. I don't think it happens particularly often, but it's, it is a disadvantage of this. So that would lead me to my recommendation, which I don't think I hit very well.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yes.
While we're on the topic.
Yes, Bill.
The C Mar model, wouldn't the, the construction manager, the firm, cost more with that risk management?
There is a cost and tends to be in the range of 3% to 5% of your total project But you have, yes, there's a cost to it. There's some, there's some cost that's defrayed because you're taking some of the money away from construction administration from an architect's perspective. It can push your value up high, higher, because you're going to pay a fee for that level of professional service. But there is, in my opinion, less risk when you know what your ceiling is and you've been given a guaranteed maximum. As we miss bid windows, if we miss budgetary targets, we're back and we're essentially losing money, you know, to do it all over again and start again. So yes, there is a fee, ranges from 3% to 5% typically, and there is often a fee for pre-construction services, but those fees are sometimes, are usually added on to the first payer acquisition that occurs once you've broken ground in the project. Construction management firms are interested in building the project. They want to build it. They make their money on materials and labor. So they're still, there is to their advantage to provide you a project at a total project value that you can get behind as a community, and they make their money on that, keeping you in your budget. All right, so my recommendation is to develop an RFQ development and selection team, and I'd like to get the board's blessing on hiring a construction management firm first, followed by architectural services. If we've considered the community, community input, which number one, total project value, questions regarding programming and community engagement, these are a lot of the, you know, the critiques that we received over the last year. We consider the select board direction, community engagement, total project value, and the evaluation of alternatives. And we consider designing construction challenges, there's supply chain issues, accurate scheduling, selecting the right architects and consultants, and market volatility that I think for our community construction management makes sense for this project. We want to know what our total project value is leading into a town meeting vote. We want to know that we're not going to exceed that. We don't want to move the mark on our community. There are questions about our programming and we need help with that. I think we need two sets of eyes on that. I think we should have a construction manager involved early to look at the programming that's already been done, look at our site, and help us to make some decisions before we hire an architect and give them their charge. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. And I think we want some more information regionally from the qualified firm as to just what level of community engagement they've seen and what makes sense from their professional perspective for our community. Design and construction challenges, supply chain issues have gotten better, but lead times on certain components, especially for technical facilities, are still in the neighborhood of, in some cases, 18 to 36 months. We need to understand constructibility as we go through design, and so we're going to need someone qualified to make sure they're asking the right questions and sourcing materials as they get built into a design. That's what a construction manager, management firm can do for us on the first end of this project. I'll talk a little bit of a market volatility on the next slide, but, so my, my recommendation again is I'd like to go out to bid for a construction management, pre-construction services. I'd like to develop a group. I've got a list of names that we've talked about, I've talked to a lot of folks about who I think could help us from the community perspective, and then follow shortly thereafter by selecting an architect. If you could go to the next slide. So again, from my research, from learning from other communities, from talking to firms and, and developing as much information to inform this evening as possible, I think pre-construction services is a good selection for us. They can assist us with the sign, defining preliminary program and establishment of project goals. Again, from a non-architect perspective, which I think is important. They can help us prepare a master schedule. I also think that's exceedingly important, like I said, about current market volatility, having a accurate schedule that aligns with potential funding and constructibility really matters for a project like this. Timing is of the essence. They provide these services and I think we need them. They can prepare regular cost estimates and help with regular value engineering through that. I think the second set of professional eyes in the construction market, I'm sorry, in this construction field makes a lot of sense for this, where you know we're going to have to value engineer, engineer our facility and get to something that we're proud of, that meets the needs of our community, and I think we need some help with that. We can do some early evaluation of alternatives, including the reuse of an existing facility design. There was at least one facility that we looked at that there was interest in understanding whether that could be adopted here in Peterborough. And I think rather than chase that and spend money trying to figure that out, we'd be better served by bringing in a construction expert who can tell us the advantages and disadvantages of doing that and our cost implications to doing that. And we need to evaluate what phase construction really looks like, what really makes sense based on what we know, know about our project now. What portions should we phase? What portions have to be there now? It's critically important that we understand how to face it because from what I've learned, from what the chiefs learned, from what we've seen touring, our demand, the demand on the facility may be greater than we can port at this point. And so we need to make sure we understand that into the future. How do you, how do you design a facility in a phased way so that we can continue operating with the ability to add on to it in the future? We would ask them to do an evaluation of existing work, including our programmatic studies. We would also, obviously, an architect would need to do that work again to validate, to make sure the program works before a design is sussed out, but still, I think it makes a lot of sense to get construction perspective on where we're at today. Could do some site analysis where they look at our current schematic design and our current analysis, where they look at our current schematic design and our current lot and maybe give us some different ideas for how we might be able to make that lot work, work to our advantage. We have one now, akin from one architect. I think it makes sense to talk about it from a constructability standpoint, and that's what a firm can do for us. They can assist us with the coordination of community engagement. More importantly, or as important, sorry, they can assist us with the actual selection of an architect and the subconsultant engineers. I think it would be a great thing to have the perspective of a construction management firm as we go through the architectural selection process. We know we've got to get the right architect for our community, and I think we need, we could really use the help of construction experts to help us review those resumes and make a good choice. And of course, like I said before, addressing the constructability and scheduling issues early in the process. That's going to be incredibly, exceptionally important at this point because of a number of factors, including one, we've got a ceiling on our project for phase one, or somewhere around a ceiling. I shouldn't call it a ceiling. It's a percentage of total capacity to bond. But in any case, we know a sort of essentially the range, and we're going to need to be mindful of that as we go through our design process. Like I said about constructability and supply chain issues, but national construction pricing has actually increased, from what I can find, 55% to 65% since 2009, depending on region. Since the pandemic, construction pricing has increased at a rate of 3% per quarter and took a massive 18% jump from quarter one to quarter three in 2021. Has not leveled off, I'm sorry, has not continued to escalate at that rate, but has sort of leveled off. But in any case, the market is still considered to be volatile. And I think with that said, having that second set of eyes, a true project owner representative who is skilled in the design and development of fire stations makes a lot of sense, notwithstanding everything else I've said because of market volatility. Followed by architecture and engineer selection second. So we would do the CM selection first, followed by the architect selection, and of course, the conventional work that the architect would do with one programming. Get right back into that, like I already mentioned, followed by schematic design based on programming and other information, community input coming from our, our groups and our owner representative, all that construction documents, hopefully town meeting of '24, and construction, if passed. If you could go to the next slide. So what would the group I'd like to put together actually be doing? I missed the bullet point here, and I'll say it last, but establish goals and priorities for the community and expectations for professional service providers. I think that should be staff and community-driven. It's important that we make sure we've had some sessions on what those documents should look like, because we need to make sure we're very clear in our ask to our professional service providers precisely what we want them to do. I think it's important that we make sure there's community input in those documents. We would review, revise, and approve RFQ documents and develop and review, revise, and develop a scoring matrix for each phase. We've used them in many projects. Essentially, it's a way that we can score multiple firms using the same rubric, essentially. This group would perform in-person interviews with prospective service providers and score those submissions, and eventually recommend selection and contract awards for select board consideration. The timeline, I see, depending on the availability of individuals, would be to start basically immediately. I would start as soon as tomorrow, after I clean up the emails I didn't intend to today, with pulling in the information, getting ready on a presentation to the committee I'm going to propose to you, to inform them on some of the things I've learned through the process, and get going right away in December, January. We'd be out to bid for professional services for construction management and do our selection process. February, we would work with the selection team and this, and the CM on the development of RFQ for architectural services, and then march out to bid for architectural selection, architecture selection. Next slide, please.
Wait, what about bullet point four you were going to add?
Thank you. Bullet point four. I started mentioning quickly, but the, yeah, five, thank you.
Five.
Like I said before, I learned a lot from the conference, and I developed a lot of information through our travels. My intent would be to put together everything I have in terms of RFQ selection, information that can better engage our, hopefully appointed soon-to-be-appointed committee, to give them as much information and ammunition to help us develop. So I just wanted to throw that in there. That information is probably most relevant on the front end, some of those sessions anyway, as we get into this work. So the expectation would be form that committee to myself, lay out what you've learned so far, and then let's develop a document together. Once we've articulated goals, I would do a draft of that, get it back to the community, I'm sorry, the committee, and then eventually report. So that's all I wanted to do was suggest the, if you could go to the next. The individuals on the screen are the folks that I am recommending to be tasked with this, this semi-heavy lift. I think the construction management portion is relatively straightforward, but the heavy lift is certainly the architectural services. Bill has been the select board liaison, Mr. Taylor, since the beginning of this. I think Bill has done a remarkable job and has really, really put himself out there and worked very hard on this project and wants to see this happen. We are well-served by him being involved with this. Chief Walker is going to work very closely with anyone that we select as a community and should be involved in this selection process. Carl, I've asked to serve here, if he's still willing. He is the budget committee chair. He has been very heavily influential and involved in the process all summer and has been a person I've very regularly talked to and sought advice from. I think he would serve us very well in this capacity. Tim Hurley, he is our code enforcement officer. He's got a strong construction background. He works with designers, engineers, and construction management firms. He worked with us on our first architect selection. He's a critically engaged individual who deeply cares about his duties with this town and would be a great addition to this team. Sarah Steinberg Keller is on the planning board. Sarah approached me directly and said she wants to be involved here. We all know Sarah's very passionate about this project. I think she would serve us well, and she'd be a conduit to the planning board as we move through this. Tony Cassidy is on, I don't know, I can't recall which energy committee. I have numerous. Bill Kennedy recommended Tony when we spoke at our last select board workshop. I couldn't agree more. Tony is very critically engaged, very well-spoken, certainly has an eye towards renewable energy and green energy sources, which we're going to reconsider as we go through this project. Tony I met with recently and was interested in helping us here, very professional, I think was a very calm person who would be very helpful in this, this capacity and is willing to serve. Mandy Sliver is our treasurer and budget committee, and is on our budget committee. Everybody here knows Mandy very well. She is very critically engaged, very personable, very critical in a constructive way, and I think would serve us very well here. I think she actually has, tangentially has a background or through her husband in fire departments as well, and has expressed a strong interest to be involved as we move forward through our, this process and upcoming. Carol is here. Carol Nelson. I, I called Carol. I think Carol is similar to Mandy, very critically engaged person, fair but critical, and I think that's what we need. We need to make good choices on who we're selecting to work on our behalf for this project. It's a very important project. We need to get it right. So we need people who are willing to ask tough questions and hold people accountable. I think Carol has more than demonstrated that to us many times, so I appreciate it. And I'm glad you've, you-
Poor Ed.
That's actually my idea.
I'm up here as well. I think I'll be somewhere involved in everything as we move forward, sort of de facto project manager at this point. Next slide, please. Tended to project schedule. So as I already said, December through March of '23, the selection of professional service providers. March '23 to December '23, appointment of a steering committee if the board elects to go that way. A couple of thoughts on that. Right now, I'm talking about an RFQ selection team, and the board may elect to want to put an actual steering committee at some point, together at some point, probably like, would be a good idea for this project. But I think you're better served as a board and as a community if the scope is better defined for a steering committee, meaning you get your professionals in, you get through your RFQ, and you can better understand the lift that we have going forward from there. But like I said, they vary from community to community. They typically involve project manager, construction manager, if you go that route, architect or delegate at times when needed, a financial liaison from, say, a Budcom, a select board liaison, and maybe another citizen at Lawrence. That's the usual typical composition. I think that happens very shortly, in my opinion, after you've hired a professional service provider, so that we can better understand what our level of oversight, what you're comfortable, what you want the level of oversight to be, given, as again, we are town, the select board are the owners of the project, and that you're going to, you'd be bet, well-served by a steering committee advising you on these matters. Community engagement is going to be absolutely huge. I know it was a big effort last year to get the word out, and I think reasonably successful, that people understand, now understand the need. But now we need to get people's input on what this is going to look like and how this is going to function for our town for the next 75 years. Danica's still here. She's patiently waiting through this part, but in any case, I have asked Danica when we get to that point to be heavily involved in the outreach. We'll obviously be working with architects, management firms, whatever, steering committee and others. But Danica will be heavily involved this time. We need to make sure we've reached everybody or tried. We can do that a number of different ways. I'll list on the board, and there'll be a lot more information about this once we develop the program out. But I think Danica has more than proven how effective she can be in this community with actual, with outreach activities ranging from downtown visioning to Peterborough. Many now, she knows a lot of the folks who knows how to get in touch with people. I'll talk about office hours in a second. Design development will happen during this time period, too. I'm a little hesitant to put dates on these yet. I think we need people that are more skilled in instruction in the current markets to help us develop our schedule, but the real aim is obviously going to be to be done with biddable documents by the time we get to January '24 for our budget process. We want to know what we're asking for, what it looks like, and have all this sussed out by the time we get to this time next year. Eventually, it may have '24 town meeting vote. If we can deliver a project that people are proud of, that they feel they can afford, then I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable saying that I think we'll get an affirmative vote, assuming we can check those boxes, at which point we'd be looking to bid and get out to construction shortly thereafter. Next slide, please. I'll leave it on this slide, and I'll leave it with, as I've said many times here this evening, I've talked to many, many members of this community in the room and outside of this room. I'm available. You probably have thoughts on this project. You may be listening to this presentation at home and not like something I said. It's easy to get ahold of me. You can email me, call me, and starting next week, because I've got something to do tomorrow, I'm going to be open door, available, 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. every Wednesday for the next year until we get through town meeting. If you've got time and you want to stop in and just talk about fire stations or potholes. Fire stations, 1:00 to 2:00 every Wednesday, I'll be available, assuming I'm not taking any day off, which is rare. So that's my recommendation to the board. I think we should move forward on construction management with pre-construction services, followed shortly thereafter with the selection of an architect, the appointment of a team to help us make those decisions. And I suppose with that, I will pass the mic.
No questions, Seth?
That was, that's pretty clear.
Appreciate it.
I have no questions.
That might be a first.
I actually have a question.
Sure.
We're going to need some interim funding for this process. Is the $2 million sufficient?
I think the $2 million is more than we need. The $2 million was extrapolated from a project cost on a municipal facilities campus project. I think our total project value as a detail has come down significantly. I do not think we need additional funding, and my goal is to return some of that funding to the bottom line of the project when we're done with design development.
So we're not anticipating any warrant articles coming up this coming May?
No. Carl has a question. Sorry, I shouldn't be moderating. I'm sorry.
I didn't see Carl. Thanks.
It wasn't a question. I have a comforting comment, because when you talked about the 12.1 bonding capacity, although you are well aware of it, you didn't mention, that I heard, there are other forms of funding that are possible to, to contribute to this, such as, Bill Taylor's been talking quite a bit about the possibility of finding some grants. But when we talked with our other fire stations, we saw many other things that they did. So I think we ought to be aware that there are some, there's some options that quite part from the, from the bonding.
Just related to that, there currently are bills in committee, bipartisan bills in both houses of Congress. Both of them are worded identically. It's a $1 trillion fire station infrastructure project. Both the Senate and the House representatives have them. The allocation will be $250 billion for career departments, $250 million for volunteer departments, $250 million combination departments, and $250 million open competition. I highly doubt that they would pass through both houses and reach the president at that dollar value, but it's good to know that those are working forward. The House bill is older than the Senate bill. Annie Custer has already signed on as one of the co-sponsors for the House bill. Senator Hassan is aware of the Senate bill. Through the Fire Chiefs Association, we had a Zoom call with her three weeks ago, I think it was, where I brought that bill to her attention, and she happens to know the sponsor, and is on a couple of committees with him. So she will hopefully, if I would, be looking to get on and co-sponsor that along with Representative Custer to, you know, move that forward to the state of the Hampshire. So there are, you know, as Carla mentioned, there are a lot of opportunities potentially on the horizon for that.
Ed, do you remember the numbers for those bills?
I can get them to you. I have them in email, so I can get them, yeah.
Let me see. Yes, thanks.
So our timing is quite good to be ready for those funding, even if that funding doesn't come through prior to our project development. Like I said, another reason to talk about phased approach to construction is we would be ready with documents, assuming we need to defer a couple of decisions on a fire station or to hit a budget. Maybe built-in design set would be, would be competitive at that point. To be competitive on federal programs, you need to be shovel-ready. You've heard that term a thousand times in meetings, but it's true. You need designs, not planning. They rarely want to fund planning. They want a design set in hand that you could put out to bid.
I wish the fundamental intention of this whole process that we've been talking-
Early on, right.
I appreciate the phased aspect of that. That's a key element. Mr. Clark?
Yeah, Dewey Clark.
Seth, what was the range of the design life of the firehouses that you toured?
Well, great question. Boy, I don't remember off the top of my head. Does anyone who toured with me remember?
There were mostly percentages.
Yeah.
What do you mean percentage?
I think you're saying the year, the number of years it was designed to.
You know, 75 seems like an excessive.
Well, I mean, some of those fire departments were working on it almost as long as we have. Actually, none of them have been.
No, 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 no.
Oh, they were all shooting like 50 years, right?
Yeah, because 75, Seth, seems like a real long time.
So I was thinking it sounds like enough.
Part of it, part of it depends on the, the structure. I know, and Carlos had pretended more of them. But there's the issue of, yes, you may have the building, you may have to build or replace systems, significant systems in the building. The frame still works. That's pretty good, 75 years. But I think the one thing that was pretty much unanimous is, don't skimp on the construction. You try and save money, because in the long run, it isn't going to save you. You know, don't go with a morden building or bother building after replacing it.
Throw it in a building.
Look for something that, you know, a brick and mortar, you know, or something.
Yeah.
Give you that long. Even if you have to replace heating systems or something, you know, or other infrastructure, at least you have the frame.
Okay.
57 Chevy with new upholstery and a motor, still a 57 Chevy.
But, but you're not playing the, you're not playing the interior, the systems, 75.
Correct.
You're saying the-
The building itself.
Shell, yeah. Designed a shell and a physical structure.
Right.
Can I ask another question?
Please.
Because I, I didn't see this in there. My, one of my concerns during the town meeting was that there were a whole lot of things put on the table for, for this building. And I talked to the chief about this, too, about, you know, at the time, what are the, there, it seems to me there are things that are required by code and law and just best practices right now, today. There are things that the Peterborough Fire Department and Rescue Department needs today. And then there are things that we can reject five to 10 years out that are probably coming down the road. Is there, where in the process does that, does, do those kinds of things start getting sorted out?
I think they start almost immediately, assuming we bring in construction management to help us with those questions. I don't, I don't think there's anyone with that expert level of knowledge in our community at this point, working in this capacity.
Even the chief?
Even the chief.
Okay.
They know what the technical components are, but, you know, the chief is a firefighter and a fire chief, but not a construction expert.
My horizon is about two to five years right now.
Right, right. But you need to know what, before you go to the construction guy, you got, you need to know what you're trying to construct.
Well, that needs assessment. And that's your programmatic study. We keep referring to programmatic study.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So one of the, one of the points that Seth had on the slide is, I mean, programmatic studies have been done back to 2004, if you look at that. But one of the other things, too, is to, to validate that, because to your point, Dewey, one of the things with the programmatic studies, as you move forward, every two-year iteration, the future has changed.
Exactly.
So, you know, and that's part of what that study will be. You can't rely on something that's two years old, because two years from now, it's going to be four years old. So, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, 20 years ago, who knew about electric cars?
Correct.
Everybody, really.
Bruce was driving one.
Forty years ago, they had movies where cars were flying.
George Jetson.
Anyone else?
Sorry, Al Lenas. Seth, will the issue of solar power or, or heating or electrical, electrical area be addressed now, or have we already crossed that bridge? Is that going to be part of this discussion?
It's a huge part of that conversation for Peterborough. So I think it starts with the construction manager and rolls into architecture, for sure. I mean, we need to start from the premise that we'd like to find a way to do it, because it's what our community's committed to, understanding we may need to make some choices, and like I said, phased approach that we could add on if funding becomes available. That ties back to Chief and Carl's comments about the availability of outside funding, too. Maybe that's- too. Maybe that's where this project could really benefit from outside funding or groups or other grants that maybe aren't specifically tailored towards fire stations, but are, but are tailored towards renewable, efficient fuel systems, perhaps, but they're absolutely on the table. We need to figure out what we can incorporate in. We know that's a strategic charge of our community, and we take it very serious.
And that's why, if approved, Tony Cassidy is on that list.
Yeah. But there's very strong advocacy across the town for those kinds of features. We won't let you get away with it.
We've got to work it out. I mean, if I'm just being completely honest, even if we can't afford those things on our first pass, we need a design to be able to accommodate them.
That was part of it.
For sure. No question about it.
Exactly. I was just going to ask, is this presentation going to be available online?
Yeah, I'm going to take this and the video this evening. We'll put them on the Peterborough Projects site.
I do.
Dorie?
In talking about the outside funding for some of the green components, I know that as we speak, you know, Congress is figuring out the specifics of how the Inflation Reduction Act is going to be rolling out, which is really more of a climate combating act rather than, you know, inflation reduction maybe down the line. And I know that there are going to be grants and tax credits even for entities that don't pay taxes and indirect pay. So I believe that there will be some outside funding from the federal government.
Great. Tony will help if we go this route. The board has yet to away there, but you know we'll be in touch. We've talked over the last couple of years on other projects, and we've got, like you said, strong advocacy for these things and a lot of great help. We've seen a lot of projects that are helped along by a very committed group of individuals in this town. Bruce is here, Dorie's here, Joel, the Huberins are here, so thank you.
James, so you're in?
There's been a variety of numbers suggested over the years as this has been explored. You had the $12 million up there in your presentation today. In prior years, I remember a number of 20.
I don't remember hearing anything about that.
I never heard of it.
You didn't hear the 20?
Never heard of 20.
It was on this document.
It's based, based on allocation of potential bonding.
Well, it was in the document.
Yeah, but that's, that number was derived because we have allocated. I think what James is referring to is, last year's discussions had a dollar figure that included an entire campus project with all potential contingencies.
Yes.
At no point in time was there a fire station at that dollar value.
And it was what, 27 million?
Yes, that, but that, again.
That's the number that was thrown up.
So that was last year's number for the fire station, the entire campus, and contingencies.
Right.
What Seth has stated tonight, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the focus this year is on the fire station with an eye to potentially incorporating other things on the site. The 12-pointers, one, is the bonding cap. That is not necessarily a project cap. That is a bonding cap.
And that's, that's based on a formula.
Correct.
That's based on a number of assumptions that may change.
So that is, so that number may go down if valuation goes down, may go up if valuation goes up. That is based, that is currently at this point in time, it was 70% that the board decided on through the total valuation. So that number, and that is important for people to keep in mind, that is a bonding number, not a project number. If the opportunity presents itself to get other funding, it could.
Right.
I'll use the library as a perfect example. It's an eight and a half million dollars, the town paid $3 million for, eight and a half million dollar project. You could wind up with the fire station being more than what the town, through tax funds, pays for.
And it's also important to remember that the town has already raised $2 million. We did that at town meeting just this past May. That $2 million will pay for the designing, the engineering, the permitting, the, everything that goes into creating a set of construction documents that's then put out to bid, and also pays for the cost of the services for the engineer, the construction manager, and the architect to oversee the project all the way through. So that money has already been raised. That's not part of that $12 million.
Okay, and I think you effectively answered my question, which is, there's no complete worry about the funding at this point on this project.
There's enormous worry.
I'm not going to stop worrying about it.
No, I think, I think the.
Is this the point we start passing around the hat?
Well, but not to speak for the budget committee, the select board, I think that what the citizens don't have to worry about is, or what the citizens can take some solace in, is this is being approached responsibly when it comes to the town committing itself to loans and bonds and, and a process. I think, is that a fair way to put it? Through this process, it's going to be, it's something that the taxpayers can be comfortable as being approached responsibly by their elected officials.
That is the goal.
And that's something that the CIT committee tries to actually help manage over time.
Well, I do appreciate that question, James, but I was so, we were this close. Seeing the thing that shall not be mentioned. I appreciate that. Anyone else? Great. A lot of work. Thanks, thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Everybody, there was so many people involved, so thank you for that, but, you know, I'm the guy presenting, but there was an awful lot of conversations with people, and we're, project's about to get very real. So I guess I need, I need you guys to, if you could.
Motion or just the voice?
Comfortable with interaction, I think it's.
I think a motion would be appropriate to choose a path.
Can you go back to the slide with the community members?
Yeah, well, I think you choose a path first, so would you like to go with the construction, the construction manager at risk, which Seth has recommended first, and then the architectural services second? Slide I was looking for.
Yeah, I would make that motion to go to take that route. Formation and RFQ development selection team for, see, I'm not an architect, please.
I'll say.
So, so let me understand this, this process here. We're going to formulate a RFQ selection team.
Yep.
The second step is then that selection team will develop an RFQ, correct? It will then distribute that RFQ, get its back, we'll do the interviews, and eventually then make a selection for that.
For a use of a selection, yes.
Well, recommendation for us to, for a construction man.
So, you know, I see there being a lot of good information that I can provide to that team to help us make good use of our time and make sure we're putting an informed document together. I will draft the document, get it back to the team. They will review, revise, come back to me, we'll get that together, get our final draft together, solicit bids against that, set up interviews, score the interviews, come to you with a recommendation, and then rinse and repeat for architects once we have an expert in construction helping us, because I think we're very well-served by having someone helping us review resumes and make sure we make a good selection.
Now, the development and selection team will be limited to a number of people. I would recommend that we leave it up to you to figure how many people you want in that.
He's already made.
That was the whole committee. That wasn't the committee that was selecting the selection team. That is.
Thank you.
Like I said, at a future date, the board will want to consider a steering committee, but we are better informed as a board and a community if we have taken time to think through exactly what that committee will be doing.
But this selection committee won't be a formal town committee?
No.
All right, great. Motion on the table already?
Exactly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, great.
Move forward.
And you want to move forward with the team that's presented?
Most definitely.
I'd rather I shouldn't make that motion.
Make that motion.
I'm sure you're about yes, though.
I'll say. All those in favor? All right. Great. Yeah, thanks, everybody.
That selection team will draw on many of the communities.
Yeah.
And all, all of the meetings will be public meetings, so individuals have a, the same